Be an opportunity to ask questions on the last slide. Start out with the assessed valuation by category and you'll note a little increase, and I'm thinking this doesn't show up there, but the 325 from the current tax rate, from the current tax year, rather, the $325 million, that represents about a 1.2% increase over the previous year, which, an increase is good. If you look at the personal property, obviously that stayed fairly stagnant. And under real estate, there's three categories of real estate: commercial, agricultural, residential. Kind of working down from the top. Made a few notes on that. They're kind of interesting regarding the real estate. The residential property from the previous year stayed just about the same at $206 million. The agricultural property actually went down. So, and of course, all this assessed value is based on values of property, so that's a little bit unusual, and that's just a Plaschke County phenomenon, I guess. But land values from the assessed were actually rated a little bit lower, and that only makes up $659,000 of assessed value. So on the, in the big scheme of things of the $325 million, it's, you know, relative to that, it's not too significant, but just the, the fact that it actually went down was a little unique. And on commercial property, that is where the increase, that and new construction of $3.1 million. So of that real estate line going horizontal, that $274 million, you're looking at a $3.1 million increase, which makes up the majority of the $3 million plus of the total value increase for the total. Then as that translates to tax rate, and you'll have to excuse my extra comment there, I saw that today, but if we took that $325 million, we took it times 2.95 and divided by 100, we get a revenue of the far column down to the bottom right of $9.6 million. To put that in some perspective, the state, just from the state formula, we get about $30 million for our impact aid. We budget 15 million. We typically do a little better than that. That gives you some idea. We are not a school district that relies heavily on local revenue, but certainly $9.6 million on a $75 million budget is significant. A couple of other things, and I always like to point this out when I have the opportunity. We put that $295 entirely into the general fund, and that gives us a lot of flexibility with what to do with that $9.6 million. But the one thing that's very unique, and in upcoming slide I'll demonstrate just how unique, is that the Waynesville R-6 School District does not have a debt service. So if you went horizontal across there, we're not assessing anything in debt service. We have no general obligation bonds out. That makes us a very unique school district across the state. I've had this same slide in for the last couple of years. I'm comfortable with keeping it. I didn't do a lot of research currently to come up with that 93%, but of the more than 500 school districts in the state, 93% have a higher tax rate than the proposed $295. And that's what we'll all be proposing and recommending tonight, and that'll be later on in board, in the board meeting for action. But the reason why I'm comfortable with that is, will, that, tax rates always go up across the state. So we'll be 93% and probably 94% in success, in successive years, and until we increase our rate, it's very typical that those 500 school districts across the state are going to be raising their tax rate. Further evidence of that, this is a couple of great slides. So I worked with, I'll throw out a disclaimer or two here. These are LJ Hart's numbers. These are not Desi's numbers. These are too early for Desi to put out publicly. LJ Hart, Bonding Brokerage, we partner with them, have for years. They've got a huge market share of Missouri. We're one of their clients, the district is. And they, they're always fascinated that our levy is low as it is. So they sorted at 4,000 to 6,500 students, and then just went over to total levy, just, I mean, and just said, okay, we're going to take those school districts and put them in total levy and see where Waynesville ranks. We were having this discussion. I said, oh yeah, send that to me. I might use it for the presentation, but I think it does a really good job of showing just where we're at in terms of tax levy. So if you look at Hickman Hills over there, incidental, they got $590 in just the incidental fund. Teachers Fund, they run $0.10, and the Debt Service Fund and the Capital Projects Fund, they run zero, but their total levy in that group of 4,000 to 6,500 is seven bucks, more, a little over $7. But one unique thing before I change slides and order to show more school districts, if you went over there to incidental fund, teachers fund, debt service fund, notice every school district, every school district has a debt service. Again, I alluded to that earlier. We're just a really unique school district in that we do not have general obligation bonds out. So you run from a little over $7 to $4.70, and now we start getting into some more familiar districts, because southwest Missouri is known for their low taxes and with school districts. So you'll get some more familiar names over there in the school districts. Nixa out of the Springfield area, Branson, but all those, as you can see, you have to work your way all the way down to the bottom. And Camden Towns is very unique. They are a neighbor, but they're very unique because of their high assessed values around the lake property. But of all those school districts, just taking of the 500 with a student population of 4,000 to 6,500, we are the lowest at $295. The range being $7.04 down to $295. I said, I think you, you know, might find something in that, in that spreadsheet that I, you know, there was a couple of things. I don't, I don't remember our membership. I don't know where they got our enrollment, and I neglected to ask. We never hit 6,063 on official enrollment for September membership, and whenever I looked real quick today, we were really, really consistent at about a 5,900. But I can assure you, you know, looking through those slides, that's, we all know that, how low our, our tax rate is, but that's great evidence on paper to kind of demonstrate that. Whoops. Take any questions the board might have, or public? Be recommending a $295 in action. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I call the monthly Board of Education to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes the motion. I have a second. Mr. Quinn, second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Citizens' statements?
We had no request for participation per Board Policy BDDH, Mr. President.
Thank you. Written communications?
No written communications either.
All right. Citizens' update. Military?
Good evening. My name's Bobby Peterson. I'm the School Liaison Specialist standing in for Mr. Wassle, the Director of MWR. The following are all open to the public. On the 24th of August is the Cardboard Race at 11:00. If you'd like more information, you can call MWR. MWR on the 29th of August will have a hiring fair. And this September 13th will be Movie in the Park, and it'll be a camp-out theme, so you can pitch a tent and call your park. It will be, they'll be showing Secret Life of Pets 2. And the movie will start at sundown, and you can pitch the tent at 5:00 PM. So if you'd like to come out, that's it.
Thank you. District announcements. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get started, just thank you to all of our faculty, staff, administration, students, parents on a great start to the school year. It's been an excellent start, and we sure appreciate that from everyone. And schools started on Wednesday, and our enrollment has remained strong with about 6,000 students in the school district. I want to thank the community for the many donations of school supplies to help get our students off to a great start. The district is implementing a new entry procedure, which allows parents and volunteers to enter the vestibules rather than waiting outside. Once inside the vestibule, parents will then press a buzzer to let them in. That, that construction is going to be ongoing, so throughout the fall, you will see the secure vestibules being placed into the buildings. East Elementary won the Spirit Award during convocation with their rendition of The Greatest Showman. Where's, where's, oh, okay, yeah, that's, that's great. I want to thank all of the schools and the Transportation Department for showing their spirit, and our Board of Education members who served as judges for this very difficult competition. So we kind of thought the video should have won that, Mr. President, actually, but...
Too long.
It was too long. That's what I get. I'll go back on script, Mary Ann. Meet the Tiger will be held at 5:30 PM on Thursday, August 22nd at Tiger Stadium. All fall athletes will be introduced, and athletic passes will be on sale. In addition, the athletic and band booster clubs will host Drive One for Your School with Cellar Sexton. Admission to Meet the Tiger is free. Tiger Festival of Nations will begin at 6:00 PM Friday, September 13th, before the varsity football game at Tiger Stadium. Multiple nations will be represented, and some food samples will be provided. Game admission is $4 per person. Athletic passes will be accepted, including the senior citizen athletic pass that is free, and you can come by our office to pick that up. Homecoming will be Friday, September 27th. The theme is Heroes vs. Villains: Tigers Save the Day. September 27th will be a half-day of school for our students, so they may participate in the parade and homecoming festivities. Please save the date for Military Appreciation Night. That's going to be on October 25th. And finally, we'll do a presentation on this in just a moment. The Waynesville R-6 School District has received the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve Above &amp; Beyond Award from Missouri Employer Support of the Garden Reserve, which I'll be presenting to you momentarily.
All right. Thank Dr. Henry. As well, Dr. Fulmer had quite the dance routine that he'd been practicing. I wouldn't allow it, because it's just that good.
So we were going to ask the board if they would like to participate next year in our, our spirit.
Heck, yeah.
Maybe I should have asked that later in the year. We'll hold off on that. You're good judges. You're very good judges.
All right.
Comes up when?
All right. Consent agenda items. Dr. Berger. Bid recommendations?
Yes, several there, but, and several to come as we get FY '20 off the ground. I might point out, I did have a question on kitchen equipment and utensils. We've partnered with OPA, but be mindful that we are still on the hook for all capital expenditures out there. And the benefit of that, of course, is if that relationship were to part at any given time, or we would take over our own food service at some point, we'd already be, have everything that we needed to do that.
Financials?
Financials for August 19th. In the MOSIP account, $45,804,352. CDs, $10.5 million with the Bank of Crocker. General account, $4,188,406.71. Payroll account, $32,884.12. Total funds for eight, or yes, 819, $60,525,643.2.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through K?
So moved.
Dr. Fulmer makes the motion. I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Behring, second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Staff recognitions. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last school year, our Professional Development Committee undertook our Teacher of the Year process, and this past spring, we were able to recognize Olga McFadden as our District Teacher of the Year, and tonight, we have brought her back to recognize her, so come on up. Olga McFadden, who is a German teacher at our high school, was named as a Regional Teacher of the Year for the South Central Region in June. And late-breaking news, on Friday evening, she was named as one of the state semifinalists for Teacher of the Year, so congratulations to Mrs. McFadden.
Olga's one of only 17 teachers left in the state in the competition. Kind of tell you about that, so.
Congratulations and good luck.
Congratulations.
Board recognitions. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just wanted to recognize the board for your support. Obviously, you play a key role in this, but a couple of weeks ago now, we were, we were recognized by the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve for the Above &amp; Beyond Award, which goes to businesses and school districts that support garden reserves while they're on deployment. So we're very pleased. We wish we knew who the anonymous person was that recommended us and nominated us for the award, but that person has been silent. We do have several people in the district that serve in the garden reserves, and we understand that important role that they play in our nation's defense. And so at this time, I'll have Mr. Schultz come forward and present the plaque that we were given by this organization.
10. Discussion items. Construction update. Dr. Berger.
I'm sorry, is that tuition?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, construction. I've got...
Construction update, gotcha, okay. You bet. We'll have DHA come up and give us, not, there is, if you've been around construction, you know there really is a lot going on, but over the upcoming weeks coming, now it's really going to get busy there. But Don will provide us an update.
You'll notice that these slides are dated from last Wednesday. Brian Nash and I were down for a construction meeting, and just wanted to update you, it's really, really kind of fun to see the, see the old building down and the remaining gymnasiums in place. Nothing during that demolition. You never know what could happen, so we were just as pleased as could be that as that building came down, the gymnasium stood as we had anticipated. This one is showing formerly where, the northwest corner, formerly where the art and the music room were. And I'm going to go to the next one. Here's looking across the site again, looking at the remaining gymnasiums. We ran into an interesting phenomenon a little bit in that the gyms are a little bit out of square to the building that we've built behind it. There was really no way to confirm or to check that, that squareness with the old building still in place. So thanks to the general contractor who brought on a survey crew, that's their obligation to do that, as they lay out the building and they identified the issue, then we quickly got our structural and civil engineers involved. So that little out-of-squareness for about an inch and a half or so is, is quickly being rectified. It's nothing to worry about, but it's just kind of interesting, as you take an old building down, sometime what you expect isn't always what you get. Interesting is, as we stand along Old 66 there to look back now into the courtyard. Someday, that will be hidden again, obviously, when the new building is in place. You had a little rain, I guess, a few days prior to us being here, so some of that site was a little muddy. This is a view with the, if you remember on the original building, we were, we were working from a base of limestone screenings, and that really gives you a very nice, constructable base to work from. So we're kind of blessed that we made that decision a couple of years ago and continue with that, with that process. I believe it was this past Monday that the, the company that's doing the drilled or the aggregate piers was on-site. As I came down again today, I drove over to the site, and you'll see a whole bunch of little, they look like little furry animals coming out of the ground. There are the marks where the, where the piers will be drilled, and then those will go into place. Looking back toward the Fine Arts Center, and that's the area that I'm talking about. It's all marked down. I believe they'll probably start drilling within a day or two. Another view, looking back toward US 66. And then the last one, believe it or not, there's some new construction already occurring. These are the block walls that are, we're standing under the gymnasium right now, and those are separating walls that, that, that area is ready to go, and construction has started. So demolition, the demolition phase is essentially complete, and now we're into new construction. I believe that's the last slide. Are there any questions that I could answer? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Grant-funded programs update. Mrs. Long?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to update you on some of our current operating grants in the district. Both the AmeriCorps and Vista Grants were approved for continuation. These were non-competing years, so we were approved for another year of continuation in the same existing grants. Tonight, I'd like to highlight two other of our grants, the DODIA Project Edge Grant and the FISIF Good Idea Grant. The FISIF Good Idea Grant, we called our application Pause and Think: Helping Tigers Learn to Make Healthy Choices. We applied for this and were awarded it last spring of about $5,000, and it will be given to Partridge Elementary. It will be implemented throughout this school year. And the focus of that grant is on wellness for students, helping student education in the areas of physical movement, awareness of their health and wellness, and development of healthy social relationships. So that implementation will look like the addition of some nutrition lessons with hands-on and grade-level appropriate lessons, also tying what they learn to their choices or their, what they can get in the cafeteria, helping them to identify how they can apply the nutrition lessons that they learned to what they eat there at school. Handwashing and infection control, some visual activities for students to participate in that. Mindfulness and resilience lessons taught in both the PE setting and then also a couple of other places throughout the school building, along with some playground prompts, so that once taught those skills, students can use them on their own when at recess. And conflict resolution lessons, including, again, a peace path and some structured play for recess in the playground. This grant, we will partner with, like I mentioned earlier, OPA to force some application of those nutrition lessons, partnering also with the University of Missouri Extension Office, the Hospital on Fort Leonard Wood, and the Plaschke County Health Department. The unique thing about this grant is it's pretty small in the amount that it costs, but the neat part is that we get to try it out in one building, and the goal of it's sustainability and replication. So we find out what works at Partridge this year, and it could be easily replicated in all of our other elementary buildings to spread some of these programs if they're found to be successful. The other grant I'd like to highlight tonight is Project Edge, which is our DODIA grant. If you remember, we were in our planning year for last year, so this is when the action starts happening, and you start seeing some movement. And on this grant, that we did name a project director. Tina Rowden started that with the beginning of this school year, and her role is the project director for this grant. And just to review, it includes STEM support in the areas of personalized learning, STEM clubs, and STEM-focused classrooms. So that looks like already started use of this last year, and then also including implementation this year. Grades 1 through 8, the use of ExactPath with an admittum for interventions, Algebra 1 assessments through admittum as well, and the transition to using admittum for high school virtual courses. We are continuing to research and plan for the elementary STEM classrooms. Identified a few different districts or buildings, rather, in this state that implement the use of multi-age classroom and STEM-focused buildings or classrooms as well that we are reaching out to, planning on visiting, and doing some research on that, as well as, part of this also included the addition of some elementary Project Lead the Way programs within these classrooms, so also planning for implementation of that next year as well. And then finally, you've probably seen a little bit of information on this came out lately. Last Friday, we opened enrollment for the after-school programs for coding and robotics. You can see coding clubs and robotics clubs will be offered at the high school, at the middle school, and the sixth-grade center, East and Freedom, and available to all Fort Leonard Wood schools as well. There's a possibility we could have coding and actual individual club at each of the Fort Leonard Wood schools, and it looks like as of right now, probably one robotics team for all the Fort Leonard Wood schools together that would meet at Wood Elementary. We've met with a group of coaches that have been doing coding for a few years, a few of our technology specialists and teachers who have worked with it, and they determine what type of curriculum and programming they'd like to implement during those clubs, and then also began with a training at the late, the end of summer for the first robotics, for our first robotics training for robotics coaches. Enrollment opened last Friday, and it is open through this Friday, August 23rd, for those clubs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. MSBA policy procedure update. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a first read on a, on a large batch of policies that have come out from MSBA. You know, I did call attention to a few in there, to please make sure you read closely. Tabs is work to look through all of these, these policies. We did reject a form on one, and there's some revisions on JHCD, just to point out to you, so that's, that's really all we have at this time.
All right. Thank Dr. Henry. 2019 MAP and EOC results. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on our MAP and EOC scores from spring of 2019. First of all, I want to highlight some of the changes over the past number of years as we transitioned to the Common Core and then away from the Common Core. We had multiple changes in our test format. So for English Language Arts and Math, 2018 marked the first year in the new exams, and those serve as our baseline, so we do have two years of data to share on those this year. And for English Language Arts and Math, students in grades 3 through 8 take the grade-level MAP test. And then in English Language Arts, the English 2, which is our, our English 10 class, takes the end-of-course exam or EOC. And then at the high school level in math, Algebra 1 takes the EOC, unless the student took Algebra 1 in eighth grade and took the Algebra 1 EOC while in eighth grade, in which case they take the Algebra 2 EOC in high school, because they are required, students are required to take an EOC in each of the core subject areas while in high school. In science, we had a first year in new test in 2018, so they are still, or in 2019, 2018 was a field test, 2019, year one in the new exam, so they're still doing some score settings, so we expect those scores at the end of October. And then in social studies, we had a field test this year. And as a result, 2019 will serve as our baseline in science, and then 2020 will be our baseline in social studies. We were excited when we got our results in to see that all the hard work on the part of our teachers and our administrators to support our work in instruction, we saw a 3.5% increase overall at the district level in English Language Arts, and the state saw a very tiny decline, so we were happy to see where our results headed. And then I do have slides with a breakdown by grade level and school. I do want to highlight our super subgroup slide. The super subgroup includes any student who is African-American, has Spanish, is an English learner, has, is in special education, or is on free and reduced lunch. And while our overall growth in ELA was 3.5%, in our super subgroup, we had a 4% increase in scores, and that's compared to the state had a slight decrease. So we're continuing to work on closing that gap between our super subgroup and our overall scores. In math, we had 5%, we actually had 5.1% growth in math, and that came in a year where we had a new math program, and so, you know, with that fidelity of implementation of that new program, we did see the results go in the way that we were expecting them to head. And again, these are our grade-level breakdowns. At the elementary level, we saw growth at every grade level in math. And then, do you want to highlight our Algebra 1? They saw 8% growth in Algebra 1 scores. This slide is a breakdown of Algebra 1, because Algebra 1, unlike the grade-level test, which you see students, whether they're in grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, Algebra 1 encompasses students who take Algebra 1 in eighth grade, as well as students who take Algebra 1 in grades 9 through 12. So our ninth grade is where most students take it. You can see they were at 57.2% proficient advanced. And then as we went through grades 10 through 12, we know that, you know, those are students who struggle with math and where we need to provide additional support. Our super subgroup math scores, district overall saw a 5.1% increase, but in the super subgroup, we were at 6.7%. One other thing I want to highlight is this year, our annual performance report is going to look a little bit different. You'll remember from the past number of years, since 2013, actually, we've been issued an annual performance score, and we earn a percentage of points to be fully accredited. Since we've had the multiple transitions in test, and then we will in the next year or two be transitioning to MSIP 6, which will look different than the MSIP 5... or two be transitioning to MSIP 6, which will look different than the MSIP 5 APR, they have decided for this year, we will have a visual representation of our scores, so we will not get an overall score like we have in the past. They'll actually show our MAP Performance Index, which is really a ratio of how many students score advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. We'll see a three-year average, and then a kind of a, how that compares to the state, and then we'll see progress, and that's how we do over multiple years with all students, and then they'll give us a growth score of how individual students grow, but we won't see this type of score that we're used to seeing. So, just want to make everyone aware, for the fall, it's going to look a little bit And again, we're going to, as we go through the 1920 school year, continue with some of the things that we put in place last year that we found were highly successful and helped with that growth that we experienced. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Moving to action items. Tax rate hearing, Dr. Berger.
Yes, and I, in your board docs, I just pulled that slide over from the presentation, and without the two commas, though, this one's corrected, but motion to approve the tax rate at 295 to the general fund for the 1920 school year, please.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Crowder makes the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Keenan makes second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven, no, motion carries. Tuition rate, Dr. Berger.
Yes, thank you. Historically, the district has rolled up or back to the dearest increment of 50s or hundreds, therefore, the proposed rate would be 10,600. That's a $600 increase from the previous year, but note, we have no receiving students this year, at least none that I'm aware of, so we rarely do. But recommendation for 10,600 for 1920.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Dr. Fulmer makes the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Quinn, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven, no, motion carries. Classified Mentor Handbook, second reading, Mrs. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed Classified Mentor Handbook was presented last month for the board's review as a first reading. The administration has not received any questions or concerns and is recommending approval at this time, please.
Comments or questions on that? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Keenan makes motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Darian makes second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven, no, motion carries. Special Education Local Compliance Plan Assurance Statement, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Each year, we adopt our Special Education Local Compliance Plan Assurance Statement, and it is presented for your review and approval, and we request a motion to approve as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Dr. Fulmer makes the motion. Mr. Darian, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven, no, motion carries. Health Programs Policy, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a, as a quick background on this, we had, this is, went through tabs, went through first reading, we had a few questions we just needed to, to go back and check on, and we didn't get it back into action, so it's coming into action now. It is, it is a drug testing policy, but it is for our health occupation students and students who go and work and do career-embedded or internships in hospitals or health organizations that require drug testing.
Any comments, questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Crowder makes the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Pondner makes second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven, no. I think Roll, you voted yes on that, didn't you? I didn't see your hand. Did you vote yes?
Mine?
Yeah, okay. There you go. Proposed revisions to the 2019-20 Staffing Plan, Mrs. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. As discussed in our July board retreat, we are asking for the addition of one School Resource Officer at East Elementary to the 1920 Staffing Plan at this time, please.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Mr. Pondner makes the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Quinn, second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven, no, motion carries. And so far, great year, so far, great start. I was at the high school. Everything looked great there, so I'm sure I know Dr. Fulmer was bragging on all those other schools he was in during the Meet the Teacher night, so you guys are off to a great start. That being said, closed session, closed record, closed vote is allowed by RSMO 610-021, Section 3, Hiring, Firing, Disciplining, or Promotion of Employees, and Section 13, Individual Personnel Records, Performance Ratings. Do I have a motion and a closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Keenan makes the motion. Do I have a second? Darian, second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in closed session.